Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Worcester City Council. Held this Tuesday, January 22nd because of celebrating the Luther King Day yesterday. It is now after 7:30.
Yeah.
If you would approve this, Mr. Paul.
Mr. Ansel.
Here.
Mr. Bastancic.
Here.
Mr. Cavan.
Here.
Mr. Myers.
Here.
Mr. Sanders.
Here.
Mr. Silvestri.
Here.
Ms. Warden.
Here.
Well, everyone's here and I'm not going to vouch that they're all healthy, but we do have a forum. At this time, the agenda will remain as presented and I ask you to stand and join the members of City Council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Before we go any further, I'd like to recognize Mr. Kurt Denning. Your crews did an excellent job this weekend with the snow. I saw early Saturday or Sunday morning, at least Cleveland Road was blowing traffic as normal. I, so, congratulations to your crew for, I'm sure, working overtime to get the roads all open by Sunday. So, good job. Okay, let's look at the approval of the minutes from January 7th, 2019. I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Is that Mr. Cavan?
Yes.
Okay. A motion to approve the minutes by Mr. Cavan.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. The minutes from January 7th, 2019 are approved. Welcome, Mayor. Hopefully, you brought some warmer weather than we've had the last couple of days.
Well, I can't guarantee the warmer weather, but I appreciate the warm welcome here and nice to see all council members. Just a couple of things I wanted to let you know about and I agree completely with Mr. Byten dyke's comments to our road crew. They did a super job for us, as always, and our sincere thanks to Kurt and his division. In fact, that's one of the reasons I have something I'd like to read to you. I don't normally do this, but I thought you would find this interesting. It was an email that Kurt Denning forwarded on to Joel and myself and he said, "Jay's email warmed my heart and I thought you both should read it." It's an email from Jay Butcher, dispatcher at our Warcock Dispatch group. He starts out by saying, "Andrew, Josie, and Jim, Jim Hauser, I would like to personally thank all of your guys for the hard work on the morning of Sunday, January 20th. I was working the fire desk and had multiple EMS runs in the city in a short amount of time. They were Johnny on the spot wherever I called them. All I had to do is give them the address and they were there making the way for the fire department. I especially want to highlight this call. I'm sure you may be aware of the situation, but the fire department was on the scene of a young male that went into cardiac arrest. I was advised by the FD that the roads were clear and that there was a truck waiting to escort the medic unit to the hospital. Once the medic unit arrived at the hospital, it was decided that the young male needed transported to Akron Children's Hospital in Akron due to his condition and that Worcester Fire Department would be doing the transport. I gave the guys the route that med unit would be taking and they immediately got to work on the route to make sure the path was clear to the city limits and where ODOT would take over escorting the med unit to the hospital. I just want to again personally thank you guys for their hard work and willingness to insist on all our residents without hesitation. I do not have a doubt that your guys made a huge difference and assisted greatly in possibly saving a young boy's life." And signed, Jay Butcher. So, it just shows how really all of our teams work together in a situation like we had this past weekend and it was very nice of Jay to pass that on. So, high compliments to our team and everything that you guys did. The other thing I wanted to comment on tonight, the administrative team fully endorses the rezoning of the property to, from a C1 to an R4 up there on the property north of the high school land. We feel it's a good use of that property and Planning Commission made that same recommendation to you, but I think that this would be a great way to put that use, or that land into a useful purpose. So, with that, we're here to help in any way we can with the rest of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have a petition for liquor permit by Mark Glassman, Inc. If you would, please read it, Mr. Paul.
Ohio Division of Liquor Control Petition. Mark Glassman, Inc., doing business as Marks Worcester, 1799 Portage Road, Worcester, Ohio, 44691. They're looking for a C1 permit class.
Okay, Council. We know that, most of us remember from the last time, we can either ask for a hearing here, a hearing down in Columbus, or waive the hearing. So, what's your pleasure?
Motion to waive hearing.
Motion to waive hearing by Ms. Warden is their second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Bastancic. Would you please call the roll on the waiver of the hearing?
Ansel?
Yes.
Mr. Bastancic, should I? Is that direct competition for me with my deployment?
Well, I mean, I don't think so. You don't, you don't control the sales of alcoholic beverages, do you?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
But, good question.
Okay. Ansel?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Cavan?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
All right, we will waive the hearing and I will kindly ask Ms. Apollo to send down the Department of Liquor Control the notice that we are waiving the hearing. Communication for the public, we have one person signed up tonight, Mr. Garris. If you would, state your name and address, please.
My name is Gregory Garris and I live at 347 North Grant Street. I signed up this evening to oppose the first ordinance this evening, which is 2019-01, which happens to be the rezoning which the mayor claims this evening he's endorsing already. I'm opposing this rezoning because our current sewage system is already overtaxed. Hence, the stink downtown that many of us smell from Prairie Lane, the Prairie Lane system. How many new waste stations are we wanting to add to an already overtaxed system? If you smell the stink downtown, you're already taking in and breathing pathogens, these airborne pathogens. I'm opposed to this rezoning until the EPA studies this problem to see how many this station will take, how many new waste stations this Prairie Lane station will take and how many new waste stations it will take, or how many should be added to it. Or maybe we should consider another Prairie Lane system up on the north end to handle the overload. These two systems, I don't think should be connected or attached. Everything created on the north end, I think, should be kept on the north end with these new possible housing units and so on. I don't think our system currently can take the overload. Second item I signed up for is the 2019-03. That's this property offenses ordinance and I'm opposed to this as well. I oppose this, and I'm not quite sure what to call it. It's not a copyright ordinance. I'm going to say maybe it's more of an ownership ordinance. I'm opposed to this ordinance, the right to use this logo from the artist, whoever created these logos. If the artist didn't give up or sell his copyright of this work in a contract, the city may use this logo, but not copyright it or in this ordinance claim ownership of it because you don't own it. Otherwise, these logos are publicly owned and anyone may use it. All this would be mute this evening, this ordinance this evening, would be mute if you had a copyright. If you didn't buy this copyright, then I think you are stealing this from someone. If you pass this ordinance tonight, then you would be stealing, in my opinion, from some artist. I'm also opposing this ordinance, if this has, if this ordinance has anything to do with what Chief Atkins said in December, sending copies of Wayne County tourist pamphlets, which obviously would have Worcester City logos on them, to several cities to attract the homeless tourists to this area. And I would like to also just make a comment on the language of the first ordinance where, if one reads 2019-03, whereas the city of Worcester does not endorse commercial enterprises. It has in the past, as it did this evening, endorsed commercial enterprises. This council, several years ago, when Ms. Knappick sat on here, endorsed a boutique on West Liberty Street openly, a lot of you did, also endorsed a pizzeria just west of the Daily Record.
I think you are now getting a little far afield there.
It's not too far afield when the city claims it's not endorsing commercial enterprises. Thank you.
Okay, we have a public hearing tonight and I believe it'll be held by Mr. Sanders and it deals with the zoning changes.
That is correct.
Well, I will turn the floor over to you, Mr. Sanders.
All right, thank you very much. Yes, we will go ahead and open our public hearing related to the rezoning of property, parcel number 67-02964.000 and 6702967.000. This is the property that's on West Milltown Road between Oak Hill Road and Commerce Parkway and it is currently zoned as a C1 and the property owners are asking us to consider changing this to an R4. This has gone through Planning Commission and was approved unanimously by Planning Commission. And with that, I will open the floor up to those in the audience that wish to speak for this rezoning. Please.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Mayor. I'm Randy Sachs from Harseks Management Company. I'm here with David Cooper, our partner, and Kristen Hopkins, a consultant we've been working with on this project. I don't want to bore you guys or talk too long, I just want to tell you a little bit about who we are and what we do. We are, we are a general contractor, a management company, and owner-operator of apartments and office warehouse buildings and office buildings. We've been primarily building apartments lately. So, we build them, we own them, and we run them. We, we've, well, we're a third-generation Northeast Ohio company. It was started by my grandfather and so David and I have been doing this our whole lives and we're not a big company. We have about 1,000 residential units and more, we have about a million and a half square feet of light industrial and commercial properties. We've been in the apartment business a long time. In this decade, we've been exclusively focusing on, we build rental units that are, it's more of a single-family living style. So, if you look at them, they look more like condos, there'll be maybe six buildings side by side in a row, they've got their own little square of lawn, they've got their own private entrances, attached two-car garages. We've also developed one other unit type. I guess I should show you just roughly what I'm talking about. This would be an example of the first project, like, this would be our fourth project of this type. So, we've done three of them in Brunswick and one of them in Madison. So, this would be an example of our typical, you know, side-by-side units. Some of them are two-bedroom, two-bath ranches, some of them have a loft above the same floor plan and then some of them have a third bedroom upstairs and they all have attached two-car garages. And in addition to that unit type, we build two-story buildings with, there's four downstairs units and four upstairs units. They also all have private entrances and attached, they've been one-car garages, we're starting to develop units where some of them have two-car garages as well. But again, there's no common hallways, there's no shared space in that way and we tend to put a lot of amenities in our properties so that we can develop a sense of community. We get a lot of empty nesters and it's our experience that if they make friends, they will, they'll stay a long time. So, we have quarterly community events for our residents, Christmas parties, we do charity drives and organize volunteering and we have a lot of, you know, common spaces, outdoor living spaces at our community buildings. Usually, an office, sorry, like a business center inside the clubhouse, a small one where there's free Wi-Fi and our community buildings are open 24/7. Pools, usually two dog parks, one for large dogs and one for small breeds. Every unit has a gas fireplace, every unit has an in-suite washer dryer, you know, and high-end finishes. They range from about 1,200 square feet to 1,600 square feet and, you know, the rents are a little bit dependent on what city we're in, but they could, you know, be anywhere from, we're getting close to $2,000 a month for a three-bedroom in Brunswick and then, but we try to offer some different price points. So, like a downstairs two-bedroom could be more in the $1,200 range or the $1,300 range. You know, I have a lot more pictures here, but again, I don't want to take up too much of your time. I encourage you to go to harseks.com and you can see more of our properties. You're welcome to, if you're ever in that area, if you, you know, want to tour any of those properties, that's, we can arrange that. We have a really good working relationship with the cities that we're in and we've had a great experience so far in dealing with Worcester at the Planning Commission, when we met with the Building Department and Engineering. So, I feel pretty comfortable being here and that my father's had his eye on Worcester for decades now. Friend of his developed a property here, I don't know, 20 years ago or something and he thought it was a great town and he's always wanted to do something here. We think our, our style of apartment would fit really well here. We're not looking for a vote tonight, you know, we encourage you to consider it carefully and you can send us any questions you have and we'll be happy to take some questions tonight. I think that's all I've got. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Do you want me to stay up here for questions or?
I think what we'll do is we'll let anybody else speak and then at that point, if there's any questions, we'll bring you back up.
Very good.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak for this proposed rezoning change? Anyone here to speak against it? All right, well, Council, do you have any questions for the petitioners?
I had a couple. Any validity to what Mr. Garris had said about sewage problems? Is there any that you would?
No, our current capacity, our waste, we're playing 7.5 million gallons a day. 2018, there was 5.15 million gallons a day. That's almost 2.5 million gallons, but they, purely on flow, you could, we have a capacity of 30,000 people.
Oh, okay.
Now, you have to qualify that, you know, looking at the future, potential industrial development and other treatment projects, but no, there's absolutely no.
There is?
Now, you also are aware when we pass the budget, we have some plans for some water control needs, so that's something we're working on, but that's not the capacity issue.
Okay. The other thing I did notice, by the way, the apartments, they, the units look very, very nice. The one thing I did notice that I did not see was sidewalks. Any sidewalks in the plan?
Do you need me to turn on the mic for the record or do you need me to turn on the mic? Yeah, okay. Yes, all of our properties have sidewalks, from driveways to units and generally all along any roads we put in.
Okay, maybe it was just the angle that the?
Oh, you mean in those pictures, you didn't see a sidewalk?
Yeah, some did and some didn't.
Yeah, some areas would have a sidewalk, but not every side street on that development has a sidewalk.
What would that?
So, that is like, that property has a main drive that goes, a main road that goes through the whole property and then there's spurs with maybe one building on it. If it's a one-six unit building, it's not going to have sidewalks down the front.
Are there, are there plans to have multiple unit sizes? For example, I know you said that some of the, you referenced a unit in Brexville that had three bedrooms. Are you planning to do one or two or three or a variety of the?
Well, with a parcel this size, we'd like to be able to do all of the units I mentioned. So, a mixture of two-bedroom ranches, three-bedrooms, lofts. We like to offer definitely a variety of floor plans on most of these properties.
Okay.
You can see those floor plans at some of our properties' websites.
Approximately, how many units are you hoping to build?
I don't know. Well below the limits of the code, you know, density-wise, if I had to guess. I mean, we've started preliminarily playing with some layouts. Some of them had 200, some of them had 280. I probably, if I had to guess, I'd say between 250 and 300.
Okay, thank you.
You would do that in phases, I would assume. Phase one would be a couple hundred units, phase two, what would be the total capacity if everything went according to plan?
I'm not, that would probably end up being up to our lender. They might require us to phase. We don't, so far, we've never stopped. Whether or not someone required us to call it phases, we've always went right from one to the next. If the lender, because of a project this size, if they required us to stabilize a certain number of, number of units before we went on to build the next ones, then we would have to do that. But if I had to guess, I would say there could be three phases, maybe two.
This is a question for Andrew. Will this require any infrastructure upgrades, like traffic lights or anything like that? And if so, would the developer be required to pay for them as usual?
When the project gets to the development plan phase, there will be a traffic study required. So, any, any results of that traffic study for improvements to probably Milltown Road will be the cost of the developer.
That's what I thought, I just liked to double-check. Thank you.
One question for Randy Sachs, if you could. I know from the information that I have read, the studies clearly show that we have a need for residential housing in Worcester. I just didn't know how specific your data is. Do you guys like to go, what kind of steers your ship in terms of these different layouts, different mixes? You talked about the two and the three-bedroom, single versus multifamily. I read, you know, up to eight units an acre, some of those, those types of things, but what are your kind of guiding forces or compasses in this?
Well, we do, we hire a consultant that we work with a lot. At this stage, just, she's done a sort of a preliminary market, look at the market, but if we, if the zoning change is approved and we get a little closer, there'll be a more detailed study. But we also, and we've looked at data that you all have published as well. We also, we know who our competitors are and so we see who's here, how full they are. We walk around, we drive around. So, it's a little bit science and it's a little bit art.
Sure.
You know. We tend to, I know that Redwood is in Wayne County and we tend to do really well in areas where they are as well, so.
Great, great. Thank you.
Yeah, sure.
Is there anyone else in the audience that would wish to speak to this? If not, we'll?
I do, yes.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Weather, you mentioned loft apartments. What would the baseline price be for something like that?
I don't know. It's a little early for me to say that, but I guess I would say we have units like that in Madison that are at 1,350 a month and we have units like that in Brunswick that go for 1,800 a month. I think it depends on what the market will bear.
All right, well, with that, we'll say that we've, we've had our public hearing. We appreciate you folks coming in to share the, your vision with us and we'll move on. Thank you.
All right. We'll close the public hearing and it will be noted in the record that it was held this evening. We don't have any unfinished business and we only have three items under New Business, but I did remind our clerk of council that sometimes the agenda fills the time allotted. So, three matters might still take two hours. Hopefully not. That brings us to New Business, which will have the first reading of ordinance number 2019, Dave Stever, one. It will, it is slated for three readings. It will be presented by Mr. Sanders. If you would, Mr. Paul, please read the title.
Ordinance number 2019-01, an ordinance amending Part 11, Planning and Zoning of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Worcester, Ohio, to rezone land to R4 multifamily residential for property located, located on West Milltown Road.
Mr. Sanders, I return the floor to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, as we just, as we just discussed in our public hearing, an application to rezone 32.4 acres on West Milton, Miss, West Milltown Road from C1 to R4. The application is consistent with many of the aspects and objectives of the comprehensive plan and is compatible with the area. The proposal will not result in adverse effects to the area and impacts of the development in the R4 zoning district will be sufficiently addressed by the development plan process and will not result in a significant increase in intensity from the current C1 zoning. In addition, the proposed R4 zoning addresses, addresses changing conditions in the area fulfilling documented demand for multifamily residential housing in Worcester. And I'll open the floor for Council. And if there isn't any other discussion, then we will say that, oh, Mr. Silvestri.
I'll just give the comment, I'm excited to see this application and proposal for rezoning come forth. I think the area would be well-suited to such a project and I'm excited about changing the zoning so we can move forward with it.
I reiterate Mr. Silvestri's comment. I think it's a marvelous use of the property location, the topography is ideal and we're fortunate to have such a quality builder, at least from the track record of their success, wanting to locate to Worcester. So, thank you for that interest and I think it'll be a long-term, serve the community well for many years and I think it'll be a beautiful application for that parcel.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. I also want to point out that the two landowners have been diligent about finding a quality use for this property and that part of our town up on that end of.
up on that end of, of, uh, Milltown and I'm grateful for them continuing to find a good use and I want to state that I do support it. It looks like it's going to be an excellent project for that neighborhood.
All right, well, with that, we'll say we've had our first reading and again, we appreciate the, uh, appreciate your investment in our community.
Ordinance number 2019, day zero one, has had its, uh, first reading. That brings us to ordinance 2019, day zero two. It will be presented by Mr. Ansel. It is slated for three readings. Before I get to you, Mr. Ansel, I will once again turn to Ms. Apollo and ask her to read the title.
Ordinance number 201902, an ordinance amending the annual appropriation ordinance and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Ansel, the floor is yours.
An administrative and financial oversight that has not occurred for 16 years, uh, is what we're dealing with tonight. Uh, we approved and budgeted funds for the Freelander Chalet Improvement renovation process. It was dialed in and it was not executed in 2018. Routinely, those funds prior, uh, prior allocations are then transferred to the new budget in 2019 and I think, uh, we have to give discretion to our, um, top-notch accounting group in terms of, uh, this minor oversight in a 16-year period. And, and Andre, uh, was, it very much emphasized that, uh, it was an oversight, uh, there, there was an apology and, uh, we received from Kurt Denning additional, uh, breakdowns just to refresh our memory. The budget looks, uh, very much in line and this just authorizes the transfer of those funds on al, allocated funds into the 2019 budget. Uh, Mr. Myers sponsored this project in 2018. Uh, we, uh, approved it and it was secured. And Mr. Myers, if you'd like to have some input on that before we make the motion to approve?
I, a little bit embarrassed that I didn't notice we didn't do it because we did talk about it in great length at the time and, and, uh, Mr. Denning, I was in a committee meeting where he went over this in detail and, and they've taken a tour of the facility. I, I'll note that, uh, it needs a little tender loving care, but it's an excellent facility. It's an asset. Uh, you've heard me say in the past, I think we should take care of what we've already invested in prior to building new and this is one of those opportunities where we can do a little upgrade and, and make good use of something that we've had an investment in for years. Uh, so, uh, it's, it's a great project.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. So with that, if there aren't any other questions, I'll motion to suspend, oh, Mr. Silvestri, please.
I did see in some of the upgrades, um, there were good estimates down through there. It seemed like there may have been contingencies built in every line item, but, uh, nonetheless, at least we, we should come in under budget on this. Uh, does this also solve our ADA compliance problems with wheelchair access?
Yes, it does.
Good question.
Yes.
Okay. And so the restrooms will be completely ADA compliant as well?
They are currently. Uh, we did that in 2017. We, uh, went through the restrooms and, and made them all handicap accessible.
But as far as access to the chalet, there is no, there's no wheelchair access currently?
Yes, there is.
There is?
Yeah, that, that took care of that as well.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cavan, please.
I, I didn't remember, but was there any, uh, plan for any maintenance in the bottom part, uh, the bathhouse for the pool? Is there any?
I believe the rec, um, department took care of the painting and, uh, we did a little bit of restroom work down there in 2017, at the same time we did the restrooms upstairs. So if you haven't been in there since 2017, you'll probably see that it's significantly better.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Seeing no more questions, I would like to motion to suspend the rules and move ordinance 2019 dash O2 to third and final reading this evening.
Motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Ansel, second by Mr. Bastancic. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Cavan?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
Okay, the rules are suspended.
Motion to adopt, Mr. President.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Ansel. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments, questions? If we do this, hopefully we can market it and, uh, because I, I think it's a underutilized building that we have, which has a lot of potential.
I, I would add to that, Mr. President. I, I had to chuckle a little bit, Kurt, when you talked about getting some new fireplace logs to maintain the chalet ambiance. So I'm glad we can do that, although $4,000 seemed a little high for a few, uh, fireplace logs, but I, I'm sure they're going to be nice premium, top-of-the-line ones. So, um, but we better sell, we better rent this out, uh, at quite a high level and get a lot of use out of it. And our, the public better hear about this and schedule a lot of pool parties for us to recoup all the, the tax dollars we're putting into this, but it should be a good project. Thanks.
I have a question. I'm sorry. Are there currently, I know that there used to be offices located in the chalet. Um, I'm pretty sure that they're not there any longer. Is that correct?
They were, um, and we did start a little bit of demolition in there. There's going to be one office remaining for the swim, swim team coach.
Oh, okay.
So we're going to keep at least one office upstairs.
Thank you.
Seeing nothing further, would you please call the, did you make your motion to adopt?
Yes.
It was so long ago. Would you please call the roll on the, uh, motion to adopt?
Cavan?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Bastancic?
Yes.
Ansel? Ansel?
Yes.
All right, ordinance 2019, day zero two passes. Our final piece of legislation this evening is ordinance number 2019, day zero three. It will be presented by Mr. Sanders. It is slated for three readings. If you would, for one last time, uh, tune up those pipes and, uh, please read the title.
Ordinance number 201903, an ordinance amending chapter 541, property offenses of the codified ordinances of the city of Worcester, Ohio, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Sanders, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, as we see in the memo from the law department, um, it's been brought to the attention of the city administration that we've got a private business that has been using, um, the city of Worcester logo in its advertising. And while this particular business is not believed to have done so for improper purposes, uh, the city of Worcester has not endorsed this business and allowing the use of city logos in this way creates possible confusion in the public. Thus, the, the legislation that we have before us this evening, um, it, the ordinance specifically seeks to enjoin, uh, the use of city logos and seals from being used deceptively. An individual only be in violation of the ordinance if they are using the logos in a manner that suggests a relationship with the city that does not exist. And I'll admit, when, uh, Mr. Scavelli called me the other day to, to go over this, it was one of those where it was like, uh, wow, never would have thought that we would have ever had come to this, but here we are. So at this point, uh, I'll open the floor for any conversation. Seeing none, I would motion to suspend the rules of council and place ordinance 2019 dash O3 on third and final reading.
Okay, motion to suspend the rules by Mr. Sanders. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Silvestri. Would you please call the roll on the motion to suspend the rules?
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
And Cavan?
Yes.
The rules are suspended.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt by Mr. Sanders.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ansel. Any further questions, comments? I would just say that, you know, this doesn't allow someone like, if I wanted to have Mike's hot dog stand, I put on my umbrella that one of our logos looks like, uh, I'm the hot dog vendor for the city of Worcester. It, it's to avoid those things, which in legal parlance is would be the appearance of impropriety. So that's what it is. We're not trying to go out and purposely make people criminals if they use this, uh, but the, at the same time, they should be on notice that they just can't use our logos to seem that we endorse, uh, their, uh, business.
Has the individual been contacted directly or are we just going to pass law and arrest him? Thank you.
All right, anything else? Could you please call the roll on the motion to adopt?
Bastancic?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Silvestri?
Yes.
Warden?
Yes.
Ansel?
Yes.
And Cavan?
Yes.
Ordinance number 2019, day zero three passes. A reminder, as we've got the coming up, the, uh, hospital, uh, dinner, uh, next council meeting, I believe. And I know Mr. Sanders wouldn't be able to do, go, I don't know if Mr. Ansel put it on his calendar tomorrow as the township.
I'll be there, Mr. President.
Meeting, uh, for the board there at the, the hospital. So just a reminder. Any committee, uh, hearings coming up? I haven't heard any, so just remember to come to the hospital to, for the dinner and presentation, uh, by Mr. Sharon. It, uh, usually is very informative and he's doing better to get us here on time at 7:30.
New location, correct?
Yes, it's in that, uh, new section right there. As you go in, uh, they set up tables and I've been to a couple of meetings there, so it's very nice. All right, seeing, uh, I don't have anything further. We'll start with, uh, Mr. Myers.
Thank you, President Biden. I just have one, uh, and a little bit of announcement I'd like to make. Uh, based on a lot of conversations our community's had, uh, regarding addiction and some of those different problems and, and things going on in our community, I want to invite everybody to, uh, here Dr. Nicole Labor, she's going to give a presentation at the First Presbyterian Church. Uh, it's going to be Wednesday, January 30th from 5:30 to 6:30. It's free and open to the public. Uh, I've heard her speak before. She's an engaging and talented, uh, speaker. You'll find it incredibly interesting, her, her talk. The presentation is the Neurobiology of Addiction 101. So it's, uh, a lot about how the brain works and how people, uh, become addicted and, and how they can recover from addiction. So I'd encourage everyone who is interested to participate and come and see, see the talk. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Mr. Sanders?
Nothing to add.
Mr. Silvestri?
Yes, I just want to also echo the comments that, uh, the mayor had read, a, a particular story with respect to our city maintenance crews and Kurt Denning and his team did a fantastic job, uh, with, uh, probably the snowstorm of the decade. I don't know, but, uh, I told my kids, I know they've never seen snow at that level. Uh, they've never seen 10 inches or a foot or over a foot of snow in their backyard. So I know we had a lot of fun with it, but, uh, uh, the real folks having the fun with it were the, the drivers of those trucks plowing it. Uh, I know I heard from a constituent that they had passed their, uh, house four times and I, I, I'm willing to admit that, uh, that there are benefits to living on a cul-de-sac street and one of them is not the speed at which my road gets plowed, but nonetheless, I was happy to see the plow show up and it takes extra time for those guys to cover cul-de-sac areas. Uh, people don't realize it. It's a lot of, uh, a lot of skill involved in getting all that snow off the cul-de-sac areas. So, uh, and I was able to see one of our finest in action. So I just want to thank you for the job well done and I think people were, were pleased and, and really, uh, honored to, to live in a town that responds the way Worcester does. So thanks.
Ms. Warden?
Um, echoing Mr. Silvestri. Kurt, I, I know I texted you rather late on Sunday night. I'd just gotten back to town and I can say, um, from personal experience, the roads, the streets in Worcester are much, uh, better cared for than some of the surrounding communities. In fact, I know a lot of the, uh, surrounding communities that I had driven through, whether it's because they got more snow or how they handled it, they were under a level three for, uh, quite a long time. Uh, but I appreciate your immediate response, uh, when I texted you that there was somebody that needed to get into or out of their driveway on Sunday evening and I know that they were also very happy with the service they received. So thank you.
Mr. Ansel?
Snow removal superlative. Well done.
Mr. Cavan?
Uh, again, yes, snow removal was awesome. And, uh, to the mayor's point of, uh, uh, our, uh, plow drivers, uh, communicating with other entities to make, uh, an emergency run, uh, possible like that is what, uh, is, uh, really, really eye-opening about the work hog with, with some things that they do as far as the communication back and forth with each, each other. And that is a, a perfect example of how it, things can work and they work very, very well.
And you get the last word, Mr. Bastancic?
Uh, just one quick thing. Uh, I did have a request from a former councilman that I remind everybody that when we get this amount of snow, that's important to uncover your fire hydrants so that the, uh, safety services can find them quickly if needed. Thank you.
Mr. Biden, I, uh, could, could I make a, just an announcement to council so that you have the, the most time available? Um, I'd like to give the state of the city address to council on, uh, Tuesday, February 19th at 6:30 PM. Uh, if that would work into people's schedule all right?
It's a Tuesday?
It's a Tuesday. Yeah, because President's Day is Monday, so we'll.
Okay.
It'll be the Tuesday after President's Day.
Will be noted and I'm sure our clerk will remind us of the same thing.
Did you say 6:30, Mr. Mayor?
Six thirty.
Uh, it, it's 6:30.
Six thirty.
Yeah, hour before. I will also be doing it at Rotary in Kiwanis. Uh, if people couldn't make that one, uh, they're welcome to, to join all the service groups to, to see it too.
I see Mr. Ansel's pencil moving, so I'll take that as a motion to.
To adjourn, Mr. President.
Second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Silvestri, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.